Hello, everybody. Welcome to our new forum for the candidates of 205 District. I'm Tracy Robertson. I'm standing in for Pam Davidson, who is our current president of the NAACP. We just want to say thank you so much for coming out on this nice rainy day and hope you enjoy the forum and find out a lot of information about our candidates that are on the ballot this year. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Heather Norman. I'm general manager for Tri-State's Public Radio. I'd like to welcome you all here this afternoon, evening, whatever it is. We would like to thank the NAACP and the Galesburg Public Library for sponsoring this event, and all the media that's present today, ourselves, Tri-State's Public Radio, WGIL, which is broadcasting this live on the air, so you are all on the radio, and The Tracker, who is covering this, as well as the Knox Student, who is also covering it. So, thank everyone and all the candidates for their participation in tonight's forum. The NAACP Branch 3016 invited all candidates for open positions on the District 205 Board of Education to participate in this forum. We are grateful for their efforts to be here tonight. Two candidates, Robert Bow Irons and Jamie Harder, are unable to participate because of scheduling conflicts. Another candidate, Ben Yetson, will be joining us remotely as he is currently on National Guard duty in Tennessee. The questions posed will be on topics solicited from local media, the local Democratic and Republican parties, and from other members of the community who are knowledgeable about our schools. All candidates will get the same questions. For the most part, questions will alternate between and within the candidates running for two Galesburg township positions and those running for the two positions outside of the Galesburg Township. However, for logistical reasons, we will put Mr. Yetson last for each question. As moderator, my role is to ask questions and referee if needed. That won't be needed. We ask the candidates to please refrain from making personal attacks on other candidates. Audience members will not be allowed to ask questions during the formal part of the forum. However, we have allowed time afterwards for candidates to remain and mingle with the audience. So you will be able to ask your questions of individual candidates at that time. Each candidate will get two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement. You will each be asked to respond to the same six questions. You will have two minutes for each question. There will be a timekeeper, they are right over there, with cards to indicate how much time remains for you to speak. If you continue to speak, I will be asking you to stop. At this time, we ask the candidates to turn off their cellphones and refrain from using them during the forum. Thank you. To assist you in composing your responses, we will now hand out a sheet of questions that you will be responding to, which you have already received. Candidates, please use your opening statement to introduce yourself and briefly describe what you understand the duties of the office to be. Also state your qualifications and your reasons for running for public office. We will also ask you to stand during your opening statement so that people can see who you are. I will also note that when we get to the questions, I will be calling on you as the order rotates. So we will start our introductions with Pamela Best Tab.
Hi. First, I would like to thank the NAACP for hosting us today and all the news radio stations covering us tonight. My name is Pamela Best Tab. I am a Galesburg native and a GHS alumnus, class of 2000. I have a master's degree in social work from St. Ambrose University, 2015. I'm a mother of two children, who both attend our school district along with a nephew and many great licensed clinical social worker in Illinois and
I think he's having a problem.
I'm a licensed clinical social worker in Illinois and Minnesota and a licensed school social worker in Illinois and Iowa. I serve currently as the vice president of Galesburg CUSD 205 and have since 2023. I also serve on the Illinois Association of School Boards Executive Board for the Western Division as chair, where I preside over 29 rural school districts surrounding us. I've held this position since 2023. I became an established school board member in 2024. As a licensed clinical social worker, I am a very passionate professional and advocate. Where achieving equity through advocacy efforts is of importance. Advocacy is designed to help others achieve their desired outcomes for success. As a social worker, I learned in graduate school the importance of empowerment, dignity, and civic service to help others improve standards within institutional establishments. To that end, I would like to address equity and access issues as it is the elephant in the room today. I'm the only current board member that is a parent who falls within the 14.5% of families in this district. Through the Student Records Act, I should be able to keep their needs private. Unfortunately for us, that did not happen. My daughter is a sophomore, who is an honor student, who is now in her third year of advanced placement classes. My son, who has been a hot topic in recent months, met his initial IEP goals written in December 2023 by March of 2024, three months after it being written. Because after months of requests and evaluations, he finally accessed a classroom with a teacher Okay, with a teacher who is amazing with understanding his needs and can read him and can read him almost as well as me and his mom. My son did this without needing to attend a private day school, as was initially written in his IEP by our district.
Oh, sorry. Rod Sherpy.
Hi, good evening. First, I would like to also thank the NAACP for hosting this and everybody here, online and in person watching this. My name is Rod Sherpy, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to the school board. I am deeply committed to public service, and my background reflects that. I spent my career as an Illinois State Trooper and a crime scene investigator, where I worked to protect our community. That experience has given me a background in safety, accountability, and decision-making under pressure. From day one, I have been actively involved in our schools, serving in PTOs, athletic boosters, band boosters, theater boosters, as well as being a volunteer coach for the Galesburg Boys and Girls Tennis Teams for nearly 10 years. Since retiring, I have dedicated my time to serving our schools, and I take that role very seriously. I have worked hard to improve district finances, students and staff safety, board transparency, our facilities, and student achievement. I have also taken leadership roles as a past board president and vice president. Furthermore, I have served on the insurance committee, the negotiations committee, and the staff recruitment retention appreciation committee. I am running for reelection because I believe we need to build on the progress we have made. My top priorities include ensuring fiscal responsibility, advocating for staff and students, school safety and security, expanding vocational and career readiness, transparency, and community engagement. The schools belong to the community, and their voices should be heard. I am proud of the work that I've done over the past eight years, but there is more to accomplish, including the potential hiring of a new superintendent, strengthening student achievement, and improving extracurricular opportunities. I am ready to continue to make a positive impact and would be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Jaclyn Smith Esters.
First of all, I would like to thank the NAACP for this opportunity, as well as for the Galesburg Public Library and Tri-State Radio. And a big thank you to all of you who came out tonight and those who are listening. There are lots of passionate people who are wanting to serve our community, and each of you also deserve a big thank you, as the school board is no small feat and holds a huge responsibility, such as following federal and state laws and supporting and overseeing our superintendent. My name is Jaclyn Smith Esters, and I moved back here in 2017 to raise my family. I had previously lived here but left to pursue higher education. Once my husband and I had our first child, who is currently in third grade, Silas Willard, I knew that I wanted to live in a community that is progressive and safe. I have made the decision to run for school board because I love education and I want to cultivate that for my children. I tell my children that knowledge is a wealth that no one can ever take away. And building on that, I know that they want to use I want to use my skills to help the young people of my community to the best chance for a successful future. I am a social worker like two others on this panel, and I know they would agree with me when I say education changes lives. I have served on multiple boards, one being the Galesburg City Council, and each time I have learned and increased my education and understanding the world we live. I plan on utilizing my skills in governance and innovation as we enter a new territory of education in our current political world. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Luann Statham.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank the NAACP for having us here tonight. And I wasn't sure how big a crowd was going to be here, but I'm pleasantly surprised at the number of people that came out on such a rainy evening. I am, my name's Luann Statham. I am a 1979 graduate of Galesburg High School, and I have a bachelor's degree in special education from Illinois State University. I have a master's degree in school counseling from Western, and then I have a postgraduate certificate from Illinois State University for my Director of Special Ed certificate. Went back to school at the age of 58 for two years. That was very scary. But as others have said, education is very important to me. I consider myself a lifelong learner. I've tried to instill that in my children, who also went through Galesburg Schools and got very good educations here. And my son went into the education field, so I'm very proud of that. I have 34 years in education, 30 of those with District 205. I was a classroom teacher for 15 years, a school counselor for 12, spent four years as a special ed coordinator, was assistant director, and then a couple of years as director before retiring. During my time as a central office administrator, I had the opportunity to work with some of the board members that are running for reelection. I was on the team that developed the current strategic plan for the district. I was also, I went through the threat assessment training, was on the district threat assessment team. I've also written and monitored grants for the school district and oversaw multimillion dollar budget and supervised over 100 faculty and staff. I also, one of my
Your time's up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara Betcher.
If I drop the mic, it's just because I'm uncoordinated, not because I'm making a statement. I want to thank everybody too, but I'm not going to go into the long list because I know like everybody else, I'm probably going to run out of time too. So my name is Tara Betcher, and I'm a current school board member. I am also a Galesburg graduate. I also went to St. Ambrose and got my master's degree. I have two children that attend this district, along with a niece, sitting right over there, and a nephew. I have family, friends, family members that teach in this district, and friends that have children in this district. I'm invested in this community and specifically in the school district. I want to be part of the decision, make decisions shaping our district that have a direct impact on my children and family's education and future. I have worked in social work and social services for several decades. My social work experience is broad. I've worked with children and families to adults. I've worked in corrections, mental health. I've been a crisis worker. I've often worked in the school district doing those crises, that crisis work. I've worked in the medical field as a social worker. I feel all of my past work experiences prepared me for my role on the school board. I know children and families. I've worked professionally with teachers, administrators, and school personnel. As a social worker, I have the skills and competency to navigate through state and federal policies. A big part of board work is understanding that policy and guidelines imposed upon schools and adapting them and applying them to our school districts in a way that will be beneficial. School districts must comply with these statutes to receive funding, so finding appropriate solutions and establishing board policy regarding these is not an option. I'll just let that be done, since I'm about done.
Thank you. Maurice Lyon.
Maurice. Good evening. I'm Maurice Lyon. In August 1985, my family moved here for my new job. I was principal of the soon to be reopened Cook School. The next 25 years were challenging and exciting as I worked in our schools. I was fortunate enough to be in the right place at the right time to be involved in developing our pre-kindergarten program. I was a good preschooler and stayed for 25 years. I'm proud to be known to many in the community as Mr. Lyon. Those years formed part of my foundation to be a good school board member. I hold the institutional memory of our school. I understand the legal and financial underpinnings of schools in Illinois. While in the district, I earned my doctorate in educational administration from the University of Illinois. And but the most humbling part of my preparation was the parent of four children, Gabriel, Ezra, Avram, and Hannah, who all attended our schools. We were at Stone, Lincoln, Steele, Churchill, and GHS. I am running as an incumbent. Over the past eight years I have served on the school board, we've made difficult decisions about the consolidation and closing of some schools. In closing the schools, an assumption would be they would not leave vacated schools to be a blight on our community. Nielsen is now the rescue mission. Lincoln is rented to the regional office of education and houses the safe school program. And while Churchill is slowly being redeveloped, the green space is preserved as a park by the city. I firmly believe we have ended up with better schools, about which we can all be proud. We have focused our resources, but the challenges do not end. I stand before you knowing we can still do better for our children. We're in the midst of constant changes and I believe improvements. Susan, I and our four children put down roots in Galesburg, but being the board doesn't give me four children, but 4,000 for which I'm responsible. Please let me do it for another four years. Remember to vote April 1st.
Thank you very much. And now in a true test of technology, Benjamin Yetson.
Hello. Hopefully everyone can hear me.
Go ahead.
Having a few problems hearing you all.
Okay, you're just introducing yourself for two minutes, and please tell us why you think the job is important.
Okay. Well, my name's Ben Yetson. I have the privilege of running for the Galesburg 205 School District School Board position to represent the students, the parents, teachers, and taxpayers in our community. I wanted to thank the NAACP, as well as the Tri-State Public Radio and WGIL for providing this forum to introduce ourselves to the public. I also want to thank my wife Heather and kids, Aiden, Logan, and Zoe's support. My career has allowed me many opportunities to serve. I feel this is just the next chapter in how I can serve my community. I commonly work with local businesses, community leaders. I try to push for whatever the best value is for each and every requirement through countless hours of market research. I can bring that same best value and work ethic to support each and every one of you. Again, I'm amongst many different people here, many different candidates, and I'm sure that we all have plenty of different qualities and opportunities that we can provide to the school board and to everyone here. I appreciate your time and coming tonight to listen to me. Thank you very much, and all of you have a great, great night, and I look forward to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Do you, you're last, so I may ask you if you want me to read the question for you, or you can stay on after you to hear the question.
I will be staying on. I just haven't seen any of the questions come through on the chat.
Okay. You might want to, let's get through, we can play with that when we get the question right. So, in the interest of time, with the exception of reading it for Benjamin if I need to, I will be reading the question once. You will have two minutes to answer the question, and we will begin with Mr. Lyon, so.
Well, this is good. Last time we had one of these forums, I was always after Rod, and he was saying exactly what I wanted to say. This is good.
We fixed that problem for you. All right. Shall we begin? "One of the key responsibilities of the school board is the oversight of the superintendent, charged with putting into practice the policies adopted by the board. How do you understand the different responsibilities and duties of the board versus the superintendent, and how those two roles should relate to each other? If it should fall to you to have to hire a new superintendent, what would be the key qualifications you would look for? And finally, should the superintendent and senior administrators be required to live within the district?" Mr. Lyon, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Heather. Okay. The board has one, hires one person, and that's the superintendent. Everyone else is hired by the superintendent, recommended to the board, and then we do the hiring. But the only person we don't get recommended to is hiring the superintendent. It's a very important skill because, role of ours, because it's with the superintendent, the board president develops the agenda. It's the superintendent who sets the tone for the district. It's the superintendent who maintains the line authority to keep our bureaucracy going. And bureaucracy is important in something, in an institution as large as ours because it's for protection of people up and down the line. It's very important. And if, unless we have a superintendent who can maintain that, our policies will be useless. The question about what to look for in a new superintendent is, okay. We need to, I believe, experience as a superintendent is not necessary, but experience in schools is. I'm not one of these people who's going to hire a general or someone with business experience because God forbid, we should have someone with business experience. We know how well they do things, opening, closing places. I want someone who's well-read, who's literate, and who's able to speak to the public, who's not frightened of the public. I worked with the superintendent district before I moved here. I was, it was a small district, and I was hired to be the principal in a small district. Why did they have a principal? Because they didn't trust the superintendent around children. We don't want a superintendent. We want a superintendent who's comfortable with teachers, superintendent who's comfortable with children, and a superintendent who's able to manage the bureaucracy to keep our schools viable, exciting places for our children. And that's not an easy chore, and I hope we're able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Statham.
Obviously, hiring a superintendent is a very important job for the board, and as Member Lyon said, the two entities are separate from each other as far as what their roles are. The board mainly is there to make board policy and make sure the district, the finances are in order, and the superintendent actually runs the district, so to speak. As far as qualifications, I think they definitely need a background in education and be a good communicator, not just someone who is a schmoozer, so to speak, but someone who actually communicates with people in the community. They're able to communicate with parents. They're able to communicate with the students. I like it when we have superintendents that are out in the schools instead of just being in their offices and involved in different activities within the district. I think that says a lot about them as a person. As far as the last part of the question about whether they should live in the district or not, I actually, many years ago, was on the bandwagon of they should live in the district. However, in the last few years, having been a part of hiring, it is very difficult to find qualified people. And so, it seems like the pool of people applying for superintendent positions, applying for principal positions, has really diminished. And so, I'm not sure living in the district is as important as maybe it used to be.
Thank you. Ms. Best Tab.
So, Member Lyon, I would say, probably described our roles pretty well. I do like the explanation we get when we run that we sit above the district. We are looking down on the work of the superintendent, is what we are doing. We govern through policies, through laws, and the funding fiscal responsibility. The superintendent does all the work below that with all of his staff. As far as hiring a new superintendent goes, I think it is of utmost importance that they are personable, that they understand the needs of our students in the buildings currently now, and understanding the needs and cultural needs of our staff and how to continuously improve it. I would want that superintendent to ensure that this district is the district that staff wants to be at. We are losing individuals, and I think that is something we need to improve on. So that needs to be a major focus for whatever superintendent we do hire. As far as whether or not superintendent and administrator should live in the district, I think it's important to know that we are funded by taxpayer dollars. We spend a lot of money at the top of our administrators, and I do feel that it is very important that they do live in this district and do contribute to the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherpy.
Everybody's pretty much already said the difference between a board member and a superintendent. Simply put, you know, the board member provides overall direction to the superintendent, but the superintendent provides supervision of the day-to-day activities. If we do happen to have to hire a superintendent, which is a good chance for this, this next group of school board members, it's going to be a difficult problem. It's going to be probably the biggest decision we make because it's going to impact the long-term direction of our district. And just like teachers are in short supply, in Illinois, there's a huge shortage of superintendents. So finding a qualified candidate that meets our needs is not going to be an easy task. As such, you know, like Member Betcher said, or Member Tab said, I would also like to have the superintendent live in our community. However, that really does limit the, you know, the pool of candidates that we could potentially choose from. So we really need to, you know, use that as a measuring stick. Ideally, that it be in the community, but I also want them to have a stake in our community. You know, this isn't just a job. You know, as our current superintendent knows, this is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, you know, position. You really have, there's always something going on, whether it's, you know, weather reports or problems in schools or, you know, every day, it's a situation. So some of the characteristics I would look for, I would prefer experience. I would definitely want them to share the vision that the board has for the future of the school district. They would have to have strong communication skills because they're the ones that relate our vision to the community. And they definitely need to be familiar with contract negotiations, handling budgets, dealing with insurance, and some of the major fiscal issues that we might have. And above them all, I want them to have very high integrity and be somebody we can trust.
Thank you very much. I must apologize. I skipped a candidate, so I'm going to circle back to Ms. Betcher.
Okay. As far as the board and the superintendent, I think we've all established that we employ the superintendent, and the board oversees and ensures that the superintendent is in running and running the district the way the board wants to. I don't think there's any more ways we can say that. And as far as the other parts of the question, I would like ideally to find a superintendent that understands our district, our district's needs, the unique and diverse community that we have. I think Galesburg's population makes it quite a challenge with our poverty levels and diversity, and we need to have a focus of having more administrators and teachers that reflect that population. So I guess that would be one of my goals for when we're looking to hire. Obviously, experience would be great, and having that superintendent live in our community would be ideal. I think the best way to know our community is to live in it. However, as many of the other people up here have said, hiring is so difficult. I don't know that if that's something that we would be able to keep in looking for that, but that would be one of my goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith Esters. Ms. Smith Esters.
I made my microphone back. Yeah, thank you, everybody. So far, that's answered. You made my job really easy. Yeah, so the responsibility of the board is more of your checks and balances, right? Making sure that we're following federal and state laws, and why do we do that? To make people safe, right? That's the first thing and foremost is safety. Sorry, this is a big question to unpack, right? As far as, since we already know the role, the roles, as far as hiring, I would say that I am familiar with hiring. I did sit on the City of Galesburg's council, and we had to hire a city manager, so I'm familiar with that whole process, right? But also, does he need to be in our, living in our community? Yes, followed by a big yes. You need to know your community, because your community, your schools are the backbone of your community. That's where it all begins. As a child, we, we will remember those moments, those times, those, where I want to be when I, this is why we raise our family where we raise our family. If we came back, it's because we love that school. And I really believe in that. And if you have the right, you know, superintendent, you would have to be grounds, you know, feet on the ground. I don't, I don't feel, I'm not a person that wants to, a person that's going to be governing way up the top and being like, oh, you are all great. I want someone out in the community, visible, you know who that person is. Thirty seconds left. It's kind of like the Department of Defense, right? You have, that's the Board of Education, and then you have your generals, right? Those are all your super, you know, your board, the board, right? And then you have your sergeants, and, you know, NCOs and all that good stuff. Those are your, your superintendents, and then you have everybody in the field. We want someone that's going to be in the field with all of our teachers, and get to know our teachers, and the needs, and, and all that stuff. And I'm going to stop, because I got the stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yatson, would you like me to reread the question?
No, I have the questions now. If you'll just give her a minute for one second. Okay. So I, I believe that the question is basically, what are the differences between the responsibilities and duties of the board versus the superintendent? I think first of all, that we're going to have to have a pretty good, close relationship between both ourselves as board members, and I'm sure that that's what they've had in the past. I think that I would probably do like I do in the military, whenever there's something that, that I don't quite understand, then I need to have some training. I know there's a lot of good training that's provided out there by the State of Illinois, and I'm sure that I can easily get up to speed fairly quickly. The second question is, if it should fall to us to hire a new superintendent, what would be some of the key qualifications that you, we would look for? I think continuing communication within the community, as well as with parents. I, I'm hoping that we can have some continued explanations, like he's been providing in a new candidate, as well as someone that's open-minded and willing to listen. And finally, for the final thing, should the superintendent and senior administrators be required to live within the district? I think that that's a, a really good point, to be able to support the community at large. We know that they're a taxpayer, just like we are, and I think that that's something that definitely would be beneficial. However, I don't think that that's the only item that we would be looking towards. That's it.
Thank you. Question two. While measures of core learning in language, arts, and mathematics have made some recovery from the damage wrought by the COVID pandemic in District 205, there are still significantly below both state averages and expected levels of competency. And these gaps are even more severe for students of color, second language learners, and special education students. What do you think are the most important steps the school board can and should take to raise student academic achievement levels across the district? We will start with Jaclyn Smith Esters.
Of course. Yes. It's harder when you're first, isn't it? I would, I would say definitely, this is not a unique thing that's happening in Galesburg. This, you're going to see this across the nation. All scores are low. It's just what happens when you don't have classrooms, right, for pandemics. So I do want to point that out. And boy, if I had the answer to this immediately, like, I'd be a sure-in. But I don't. So my answer would be this. I really like to think out of the box, and I don't think we should live in a silo in our district. We should be asking other districts to see what they're doing. Are they seeing improvements? I mean, and I don't mean just in Illinois, I think Iowa, we're so close to Iowa. We should be partnering, partnering with more school districts to see what they're doing. We got really smart people in this state, and really smart people in Iowa. We needed to realize that, and start reaching out for some help and assistance. I want to make sure, these are pretty dense, so I have to make sure I answered all of the questions here. Let's see, as far as the rest of the question, I would definitely say we're still following our mandates of our state for the, that our governor's given us, as well as our state legislative with the DEI. And I think that is something that's going to keep us going, and keep us to be more diverse, and making sure that we're looking at the right peo-, you know, the right things that we need to do. I, I, I mean, like I said, I can't answer that question, because if I did, I'd be a sure-in. So all I can say is, I would work very hard to find out how to make those better, to change our test scores, and so on and so forth. And I feel like we could do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Luann Statham.
As a central office administrator, the last couple of years, I know this has been a really big topic of how do we raise our test scores and, and meet certain state requirements? And I, I think the district, since the pandemic, has done a really good job of reaching out for, looking for grant money, looking for ways to fund new programs, to get our students more involved. I would like to see more outreach to get more parents involved as, in their students' learning, getting the parents in the building for more reading nights, more math nights, things like that, to get more of a connection with their students' learning. I think if the, the parents are helping the students learn at home, that's going to be a big plus in the students' lives, as far as not just having that time at school, being the only time that they're, they're working on their academics. And like Jackie said, the, you know, this isn't a problem just in Galesburg, it's a national problem. And I think it will continue to be a challenge for every school district, not just in Illinois, but across the country, of making those gains when there was such a big lapse in education during COVID. So, still a struggle. I just think the school board and the, the administration just needs to continue to work together to try and, to come up with new ideas of getting the students involved, getting the parents involved, and mainly getting the students to want to come to school and want to learn.
Thank you. Ms. Best Tab.
So I have a little bit of a different take on this. So, you know, one thing about COVID is, is that the only thing, and I will say this constantly, that it did was exacerbate all the underlying issues that already existed at the end of the day. So when we talk about scores, and as an example, this is where the board separates from the superintendent. It is a superintendent's job to ensure that our students are meeting achievements. It's the board's job to ensure that this stays consistent, and we would do that through evaluations. There are several groups that are mentioned here, you know, black, disabled, that really, these numbers have always looked like this, before COVID. So I ran four years ago, and at that time, I did seven years of statistical research at that time, and these numbers looked the same. It's been stagnant in this area. So as a board member, what we need to be looking at doing is actually having someone come in and assess these areas, and see where improvements can be made. I would like to say that we have implemented a position, which is by Ms. Brittamire, and sorry, Ms. Brittamire, if you're hearing me, I do not know the title, but her job is to look at these achievement gaps that we do have. We just went over this in our last meeting last month, about these discrepancies and how we can improve them. So while we do have targeted designations on four different schools within this district in the last two years, her job is to check out these areas and see how we do improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherpy.
Student achievement and, and achievement gaps is definitely a concerning problem. It's something that we're intimately aware about and haven't been ignoring. In fact, every month, it's something that, as a board and the administrative staff, they, you know, provide us with solutions. I don't think there is an easy solution. Some of the solutions that, that we're doing is early intervention programs, tutoring, mentoring, we're providing teacher training, teacher recruitment and retention, that's a critical aspect, too. And also, I, I think our district, we excel with the mental health and our social, emotional learning programs. Other school districts come to us to look for what we're doing and doing right. Bottom line, we need to make sure that all students succeed, regardless of the background. And I think one of the best ways we can do that is by supporting our teachers and staff, so that they have the tools and the resources they need to learn, and are, need to, to teach it, so their students will learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
Okay, the gaps. No one wants gaps. We want children to come to school every day. We want to make sure we have good places for them. I'm going to mention facilities again, and I want to thank the community for 15 years ago, voting for the penny sales tax to allow us to have good facilities, because kids want to be there, want staff to be there. Because we can't instruct students, we can't work with them unless they're coming to school. So they need to want to be there. So what makes them want to be there? Well, the curriculum has to be strong enough that engages them, they have excellent materials to, for teachers to use, and I think we're doing that already. There has to be excellent instruction. So we need to hire well, we need to train well, and supply the teachers with the materials that they need. We have some systems in place currently to deal with students who aren't learning well. I can, meetings, maybe, if you've watched any of our meetings, they throw out these letters, like MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support, something like that. And that's, makes sense. We need to make sure our initial teaching for our, all of our children is engaging and good, the tier-one instruction. But we also have to be available, have the resources available for our staff to work with those students who aren't achieving, that tier-two group. And I think we have some interventions in place currently, and we need to continue with them, and probably make them better. But there are things in place, we need to keep funding them and keep supporting them. Otherwise, we'll see the gaps continue. Gaps alone are something we don't want to have, because we want all of our children to be learning, because that's what we want for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Betcher.
I think that our district is aware and focused on it, like, you know, most of us. As I said, at every board meeting, we have some kind of report for one of our schools about how they're doing, we're making progress, we're not where we need to be, and we need to continue on that. As far as the gaps with the students of color and the second language learners, I think first of all, we just really need to acknowledge that there's a big gap there. And before we can even begin to come up with solutions, we have to acknowledge that there's a difference between those students and those of white. I think some ways to help with that would be, and here's the social work coming out in me, making sure we're eliminating test bias, how we're testing, you know, tests are historically biased against students of color. I think that we need to be creative, not every student learns the same way. You know, we need to find the ways that work for that individual student. We don't have to find, like, everybody's on the computer, and we do the computer thing. I, that was one of my, the biggest struggles in COVID, is just using the computer constantly. Some kids are hands-on and learn that way. We need to be more flexible with that. Not every student in the classroom has to learn the same way. We need to be able to learn different ways. And I know that our teachers are very creative, and I think that helps a lot of our students, and has helped the progress that we've made so far.
Thank you. Mr. Yatson.
Hello. Thank you. I, I read the question, and I, I think the, the issue here is that the COVID pandemic has provided a, a, a break in the learning of each of the students, and being able to meet the state averages. I, I'd like to probably compare it to my training that I'm here at, even though there's a, a certain level of training and, and format that is required for the contingency training for emergencies that I'm currently at, it's just like the, the teaching within the classroom. Every teacher is, I'm sure, taught how it is that they need to instruct the students. However, one thing that this training that I'm at also serves as, is being able to reach out to other teacher, well, other contracting officers inside of our curriculum, or our, our area of expertise for contracting. I think that possibly, as a board member, that's something that we need to look at, is being able to provide more opportunities for our teachers to be able to look into other schools that are within the State of Illinois, or in the Midwest, in these specific categories, such as special education. That way, we can see what are the, the items that have worked for those individuals in those school districts, to allow them to be able to raise their scores, and to see better success for each of their students. And most likely, there's some information that we can glean from that, and make changes in our own areas and in our own school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. Another key responsibility of the school board is to be in close and ongoing communication with the community. What should the board be doing to make sure that the community is well-informed in a timely way of issues it is facing, and decisions it is taking? And also to ensure that the community has ample opportunities to make its concerns and aspirations known to the board? For instance, should board meetings be recorded or broadcast? Also, can you assure us that you intend to reflect the goals and values of the community at large, and not just one narrow segment? We will begin with Ms. Butcher. Betcher, sorry.
I think that the district's already kind of doing this. We already stream our board meetings, we post our agenda prior to our meeting, we have a timeframe for where we can have people come and have public comment. I think that what we can disclose and be transparent about, we are. I, I think maybe this question stems from some situations that have happened, where we were not able to disclose information. But for the most part, I think that we do a good job. I think that always there's room for improvement. So if the general public has solutions or suggestions on how we can be more transparent, or more, have better communication, I'm all for it. That's one of the reasons why I ran initially, is I wanted better communication. And I think that we've done a good job with that. But I'm definitely willing to listen to any other suggestions where we need to improve upon that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
Eight years ago, when I originally, initially ran for the board, at the same time that Rod and I are also running, Vicky Banks ran with us. And Vicky was elected to the board, became the board secretary. Her most important piece was that we need to be transparent in our practices. And she pushed on that at every board meeting. Unfortunately, Vicky became sick, and has since passed away. But her push helped us move in a good direction, became more transparent. The behaviors that we have in terms of recording and broadcasting came out of those behaviors, those initiative, and those things are happening. We invested a lot of resources in the new boardroom, so make it easy to broadcast, and for the speaker to be seen, so that's happening. We, I believe, have some presence on the social networks. I don't participate in such things, but I'm told that we do those, and I hope they're social, not asocial, but that's something for time will tell. We do have a website, to which I do know how to use, but there's, I think there's room for improvement on that, and I shared that with the administration recently. We had a, a day when we didn't have school- And I shared that with administration recently. We had a day when we didn't have school because of weather, and it was, I'd like to see it posted right when you get it. You own the website, and right there, it hits you in the face. Things need to be hit in the face to get information out instead of scrolling down to the most recent notes. I believe that there's greater communication with parents through the email systems that are set up or text systems that are set up. And I'm not sure the general population knows a lot about what goes on in school, and I think we still have room for growth there. It was easier when we had a local newspaper, which we don't have any longer. And I will compliment Tri-State Public Radio on including our board candidate comments on their website for those people that want to look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sherpy.
First, I would like to thank Member Lyon for remembering Member Banks, because that was something I recall, her passion for wanting open communication with the community and the board, and it's something that we did instill. And it's become a matter of routine now. All of our board meetings are publicly videotaped, and you can watch them at home on YouTube or all the documents. It used to be, it seemed like those, all the documents that we used, it was almost a secret thing, you know, the financial documents. And it's really sometimes quite boring to read, you know, it'd be like 600 pages of stuff. But it's all accessible on the website. So we do try to maintain as open communication as possible. And I don't know about all the other board members, but for me, that's something that I utilize in making my decisions because I don't necessarily know. I learned during COVID that of the 4,000 students, there's each one of them has a different situation. And they would contact me and tell me, and sometimes it'd be perspectives that I didn't even consider. So it's almost a two-way street. So it's real important, if you have a concern, you need to, you know, reach out and contact your board members. You can come to the board meetings and speak to us all, or you can send us emails regardless. That communication is critical. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith Esters?
I would definitely say transparency is so important for any board to make sure what's going on. So that's great that, you know, the district's, their board members are already recorded and so everything's available. So that's great. I think we're doing a great job on that. Although, I would say that we could do a lot better on informing. I do, you know, we get that alarm in the middle at 5:30 a.m. that says, "School is canceled," which is great. I want to bring a story to tell you real quick. Hopefully, I have enough time. When I was a freshman in high school in 1996, now you know my age, we were at a track meet in Galva. That's where I grew up, was Galva, in a tornado came. So during that tornado, we were all, everyone was rushed inside, and, you know, we're all like, "Oh, my God, what's going on? There's a tornado, and this is scary," right? Now, on the other end of that, as a parent, what if I wasn't at that track team, like, game, you know, at the meet? That would really concern me, like, "Where's my kid? What's going on?" And I think that creating something before it happens is so important for information. Let's see. I also think for, just to be more versatile, is to make sure that our information is always in French and Spanish as well, because we do have those speaking individuals in our school system, because we're lucky. How great is that, right? Also, I think working with the community or with the city would be instrumental in creating better communication and getting information out. I think a community center is so important in this community because it's a way for all of us to get together, and we all become a stronger community in all that we do when everyone's participating, not just school boards. Let's see, I think that's all I have. I mean, technology is important. If we can use apps, I know that if we could have apps for each grade school, then that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Statham?
I think the, similar to what others have said, the district has made great strides over the last several years to make sure that communication gets out to the community with the streaming of the board meetings and them being posted on YouTube. I feel like the board meetings themselves have been a lot more accessible. And the, as far as reflecting the goals and values of the community at large, the, I think anybody who knows me and knows me when I was a teacher and a counselor in the district, that I am open to all different kinds of opinions and have worked with people from every socioeconomic level here in Galesburg. And as Member Sherpy mentioned, the board members have emails. I would welcome emails if people have concerns. If they, I would be open to people calling and having conversations. I'm retired now, so I have more time. So my husband was a board member 10 years ago, and I can remember him having phone conversations with community members, getting lots of emails and responding to those. And I would be open to doing that as well and making sure that everybody's voice is heard.
Thank you, Ms. Bestev.
So four years ago, I ran on transparency and what that looks like. Little did I know what transparency would really look like sitting on the school board. Again, going back to the fact that we are very much mandated by legal policies, there are some things that are not transparent. Transparent, Lord? Transparent. And one of those things are children's student records. So we have to keep that in mind, that that is not something we can be transparent about. What we can be transparent about is the doings in this district. So when we talk about communications, one thing that we have improved on is that we just recently introduced rooms, which many of you should already be getting text messages all the time at this point. If you have not signed up for it, I am one. Posting the board agendas. One new thing that we've recently done in the last two years is doing what's called board briefs. So it's given you just an overall general view of what we are talking about at the board table each month. So that is absolutely available to you. Our social media has definitely been more access friendly. Can it be friendlier? Of course. We can always do better there. And then as far as community engagement goes, this is a new committee that we have created, which is going to help increase what our action has been in the community level. We know that this has been a struggle, and I do sit on this committee and would plan on staying on this committee if I were to be reelected. But the goal is to get more people involved in this school because oftentimes it has been like there's a wall between the school and our community, and the goal is to make these things meet so that we can really focus on being more of a village. So that is something that's been recent in the works, and it is only going to get better. So please do pay attention to that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Yudson.
Hello. Another key responsibility of the school board is to be in close and ongoing communication with the community. I think one thing with COVID it's brought to us, we were separated for a really long time. But technology has stepped in to try to bring us closer. I think that the school district posting the meeting agendas and the meeting minutes, as well as any other applicable documents, has made things a lot more transparent. I think, though, that we could possibly try to get a little bit quicker posting of agendas to give the community a little bit more time to be able to digest that. I think that probably could have alleviated different issues in the understanding from the public, such as the confusion with the property tax rate changes that happened. I know there was a lot of concern, but, and then there's been a lot of concern about the, how the sales tax is utilized for construction of the different facilities. One thing that I would say is that I've been to quite a few school board meetings over the last year, two, year and a half. And normally, you would think that there's probably a lot of boring management things that happen. But you also get opportunities to learn about different things that the students have excelled at, that you may or may not catch through the social media. I know that my kids are always telling me, there's new social media platforms, they're coming out all the time, and I'm always struggling to keep up with the newest app that's on my phone. But I think possibly a way to get through this for all of us is to have some form of communication hub within the district, someplace where we can go to to find out questions if we're within the community and we have a little bit of a disconnect. I think that that would be something that I'd like to build upon if I'm given that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Question four. For some time, the education of our students has suffered from a shortage of properly trained and certified teachers, both directly and indirectly through the additional burden placed upon the existing teaching staff. What steps do you believe are necessary to address this ongoing teacher shortage, the damage to teacher morale, and the resulting burnout of our most dedicated teachers? And specifically, what steps would you take to educate and familiarize yourself in detail with the challenges faced by our teachers? We will start with Ms. Betcher. Oh, sorry, wrong, wrong question. We'll start with Ms. Bestev.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Sorry about that. I got off track.
So at the board level, we do have a committee. It is renamed. It is the retention, and it's dealing with staff. One thing that we recently introduced was Thrive in 205, which I do feel like has been a positive thing for our staff, members, the community, other staff members, children, everyone can vote for whoever they feel like is doing an amazing job. And they get rewarded, and it's generally two people a month. So that is something we do post on our monthly meetings, and we watch that video every month. One thing through strategic planning is we've had the conversation of the retention and recruitment and what this looks like and changing what recruitment really looks like. We now have our assistant superintendent, who is doing work on this in with HR, and trying to reshape what this looks like, because for several years, this district did not have an HR department. One area that has always constantly struggled is trying to recruit and retain minority teachers. We do have quite a large black population. It is, actually exceeds the state population per pupil for our community and, oh, sorry, for our community. And this has been an ongoing conversation of what this looks like to try to retain these individuals. This is going to take work. We are in rural Illinois. Many people do not want to live here because we don't have a lot of things here. Things are coming. And I think the better we get at recruitment, the better opportunity we will have to retain some of those individuals, because our students really do need to see individuals that look like them so that they know what it is that they can attain.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind everyone to talk into your microphone so that the outside world can hear you. Not everyone is in this room. We will continue with Mr. Sherpy.
Okay, well, teachers shortage is a statewide problem. It doesn't impact us. It's going on everywhere. To address that, we have created a new committee, the Recruitment, Retention, and Appreciation Committee. And the purpose of that committee is, just as the title is, but it's a brainstorming situation where you look for any possible solution, whether it's to recruit staff, keep the staff, and once you have them, you want to show them that you appreciate them. Some of the things we need to do to recruit staff, it begins with contract negotiations. For my past two terms, I've been on the negotiating committee. That's critical, having the right benefits. That helps attract teachers. Having quality insurance, health insurance, that's important, too. I've been on that committee. That's critical, you know, to bring teachers into our community. Another thing, as far as the appreciation part, we need to listen to our teachers. Personally, I try to go through the different schools and go classroom to classroom and listen to teachers, listen to what their concerns are. And once you listen to them one-on-one, then you get a better appreciation, you know, what we can be doing better. Some of the things that we can be, you know, we can do is provide more training for them and make sure we have the different support and resources to, you know, help them do their job easier, because it is, it's a really tough job. And I am proud to say that we do have a really strong SCL program that doesn't, isn't just for our students, it's also for our staff. And we have the monthly, you know, award recognition. And this past weekend, we had a one-day seminar that was, you know, basically devoted towards providing social, emotional events for each of the staff so they can learn how to take better care of themselves. Because as a board, we care about the people that we have, and we want to keep them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith Esters?
Well, first and foremost, what I would do is go see what the teachers are doing and talk to teachers. Because I'm not a teacher. God bless you all. You were amazing. I could not do your job. I teach youth night on Wednesdays for like five kids that are between the ages of kindergarten to about first grade, and I don't know how you do it. So yay. So what I'm saying is, I would have to ask the experts in the field. I'm not an expert. I feel that the only way that we can figure out retention, and I mean, we could have, you know, do this, this, and that, but if you're not talking directly to the people that are doing the job, then we're not going to learn anything or get better at what we're doing. I know that right now, K through 12 are big classes, and we, they're going to get bigger. Thank you, COVID. Okay. I have one of those little children from COVID, so yay. So I know, and they're full of energy, full of energy. So I just, I mean, we got to be prepared, and whatever we need to do, we need to do and make it happen, because we can't let burnout happen. I'm a social worker, and I know what burnout is like, and we lose really good people, and we can't start from the bottom at this point in the game. So just know that if you're a teacher out there, if I'm on the board, I'm going to support you and be available and shadow you and just think you're amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Statham is next.
Having long-term subs in the district has been an issue the last few years. And I know firsthand, having tried to hire special education teachers, it's, there's such a huge shortage in that area in particular, as well as many others. But it's, I don't think people realize that having those long-term subs is an extra stress upon the teachers that are certified, who have to take on additional mentoring, sometime additional duties, doing things because the long-term subs aren't qualified to do that. So, but I think the district has made some strides in the last couple of years to try to get, you know, always as many certified staff as we can. But having attended some of those teacher career fairs myself, it's very disheartening when most of the people who come to your table are from the suburbs and have no interest in coming to this rural area. As Member Bestev pointed out, we are, we are in a very rural area. I always tell people, we're kind of, Galesburg's kind of an island because we're 45 minutes either way from a large city. And when you talk to possible recruits, they're looking for nightlife. They're looking for lots of things to do. And so it's difficult to attract people to our area. So I think just continuing the efforts that the district has already been making in trying to recruit new people, keeping those people here, that's another issue. People come for a couple of years and then they leave. Instead of, you know, we don't want Galesburg to be a stepping stone. We want people to come here and stay. So just continuing our efforts in that way. And then as far as the other last part of the question, dealing with input from teachers, that my door is always open to listening to teachers and their concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon.
Thank you, Heather. Well, this, as economic development people would tell us, it's difficult bringing lots of different people to Galesburg. Though, all of us in the room here, we've made the decision to be in Galesburg. So there's something nice about this place, and we have to be able to share that with other people. I like it. For example, I met with our CPA for do taxes today, said they can't find CPAs to come to town. We know how difficult it is for them to attract physicians to come to our community. These are not just school problems, but we as a school need to attack those problems, just not say, "Well, yeah." No, we need to do something. But we also know it's a statewide issue. Part of it, I believe, why we have a teacher shortage is less people are going into teaching. We know that from the schools around the state. Part of that is, needs to be pension revision, possibly. New teachers are coming into this tier-two level, which they don't get nearly the benefits that people have taught previously. That's a state issue. The part that... That's a state issue. The part that we can affect change is what we offer to our teachers. Part of it is the salaries and benefits we can offer them. Part of that is the resources we can offer them. I'm glad to save the last seven years here in the district, we've made able to save a million dollars on our utility bills by building the solar arrays at four of our institutions. That's a million dollars that can go into schools, go into teachers then, instead of going to Amren. That's a very positive piece. We have, at one point, we had our negotiated agreements, where we were ahead of the curve for beginning salaries. We have fallen behind the curve. We need to adjust that. We can only adjust that if we have the resources, so we need to protect it on our resources and focus them on the people that make the schools work properly.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Betcher.
All right, I'm gonna admit it. This member Lyon was correct. I should've went first. So as it's already been said, we have strategic planning, where we've identified committee, and it's for recruitment and retention and celebration of our staff. Ms. Ritchie is leading that. She's doing a really good job. She's very passionate about it. She's very creative and unique. She goes to all those fairs. She sees what kind of swag they like. Look, look, I've got my swag here today. What works, what doesn't work. She's trying to be creative, and that's just a small part. Like everybody else said, it's, it's the community. It's really, somebody really has to want to come live in this type of community. But we need to get our salaries better, compensations, benefits, incentives. We really have to work at that, because we are such a rural community. As far as the last part with teachers, I'm always open to listen. My sister is a teacher. It's why I'm on the board. It was her insistence that I run, and here I am, running for another term, because I enjoy it and I like it, and I appreciate teachers, and you will never have a, a bigger listener than me. So I will always be here, listening for teachers, any, any concerns that they have, and I am almost done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yetson?
Thank you. So for some time, the education of our students has suffered from a shortage of properly trained and certified teachers. I think the, the biggest thing that, that comes to my mind, and, and how we would combat this as a, a, a board member, is by going to the teachers and asking them themselves, you know, what are, what are the main things that you're seeing that you're having troubles with within the district? What are your suggestions to be able to provide better teaching abilities for yourself? I, I think that the Thrive in 205 program is excellent, but I don't know if those are exactly the problems that they are for sure facing. I'm sure it's some of them. I'm sure that money is some of them. I know at times in my career, I've, I've had to look at moving on and seeing if I could find a better opportunity for my family. But we have a good community here, and so there's gotta be something that's, that's sending them outside of the district. Some of the steps that I think that I'd want to do, other than reaching out to the teachers, is finding some different, educating myself, just like I went back to school and, and I'm finishing off my, my master's degree in public administration. I'm trying to better myself. I want to know what it is that the teachers think that they need to better themselves and will improve their morale. Now granted, as a parent, I'm just looking from the outside in, but I remember whenever I went to school, I looked forward to not just my second-grade teacher that I had, but I, I enjoyed seeing the third or fourth-grade teacher. If we can find a way to keep these teachers within the district and not seeing them move around to multiple different locations, then, then I hope that we can find that. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Question five. The demographic, oh, sorry, the demographics of the district's student populations present some special challenges to delivering a quality educational experience for all students. Seventy-two percent of our children are from low-income families, with 15% moving in, out, or between schools each year. Two percent are unhoused. Seven percent are not native speakers of English, and 15% are on individual education plans. How well do you think the district is doing in providing resources and programs to address these challenges? And are there specific initiatives you would recommend to address them? We will begin with Ms. Betcher.
So these populations, like the low-income, the moving in and out, the homelessness, the non-English-speaking students. I work at the Family Community Resource Center here in Galesburg. And that's the populations we see. That's our community. I think a big part of the district's responsibility is to be recognizing resources and referrals, and identifying needs, and what we can do. Let's use the community, and use the resources around to help with this, with these populations. As far as IEPs, we need to do better with special education, I think. I think we need to recognize that, that needs more support. And as far as, let me make sure I got all this sound. I know, stupid, a lot in there. For resources and programs, I think that, oh, God, it's over already. As far as resources and programs that we have, I think the district does do a good job. Like we have the Keisha Cares, and we have outreach workers that do an amazing job. I don't think they get enough credit. They are constantly reaching out to all of those populations, and just anybody that's struggling, and they do make a difference. They connect with those home, you know, with the, the kids in the community. They connect with the kids in the home. But I think there's always a chance, there's ways to improve. I'm just gonna stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon?
Okay. Programs for people with needs should be the inverse of how we look at good taxing. With taxes, you, you have more, you pay more. With students who with needs, you have more needs, you get more, because we need to bring them up. And that's an important value that we need to hold. We need to reduce the barriers for all the children coming to school. We've done this over the last number of years. I'm proud to say that District 205 was the first district in our area to be a no-fees district. So everyone can come. You don't have to, September just come around, and there's school fees, and then that fee, and then other fee. We are a no-ski fee district. We do provide resources. We've done very nicely in expanding the resources we have for the non-English-speaking population. That has grown as the population has grown. I'm very glad that population is in the community. With 250 students, if we had 250 less students, our district's population have grown much more drastically, shrunk much more drastically than it has. We have almost leveled off, which is nice to see for our community. And I think a lot of that, we can thank for the immigrant population in our community, and we have the services for them. We have the personnel, and we have the resources. We have resources in multiple languages. And not only languages, we also have purchased materials that reflect the various ethnicities of our students, and that's an important piece for all students to feel that they belong, if they're gonna, if they're gonna progress and do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherpy?
Well, I think this is my time to be behind member Lyon. He said quite a few poignant things. I think most important is the fact he talked about reducing barriers to learning. And that is something, as a board, for the past eight years, we've been working hard to accomplish that. With the ELL students, the English-language learners, that is an increasing population of our school district, we rely a lot on one person who works a lot. I don't know what we'd do without him. So I think that'd be something I would like to see, if we could find somebody to, to, that speaks all the languages he does. He would, that would definitely be a benefit to have another person in that position. And again, I'm, I'm proud to say that we do offer free, free breakfast and free lunch for all of our students. There's no barriers there. And there's, you know, that, that's something unique to our district, and eliminating the registration fees, that's a great thing we've done. As far as the, the students moving between schools, one of the things that we did some time ago was we worked with our curriculum, so that if you were a student at Silas, a third-grade student at Silas, and then suddenly your family moved to Steel, the, the curriculum at Steel would basically be the same curriculum that, at third grade, that they've experienced before at Silas. So that's a good thing that we've accomplished over these past eight years. But that's something that's, we have to continually do to maintain that type of a curriculum. But most importantly, though, I think it's important that we, we listen to the students and parents, because all these things that we're doing are great, but if we're not meeting their needs, or if we're providing something that they don't want, we need to know, so that we could redirect our resources to areas that, that do fit the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith Esters?
I'm gonna give you a statistic. Those born into poverty are 32 times more likely to repeat it. Let that sink in. That's a big percentage, right? Currently, Galesburg sits at a 20%, over 20% in poverty rate. That's double the state average. I think what the district's doing well is they're following the McKinley-Vento Act, which means they, no matter where you are in the spectrum, there are financial issues, or whatever, you're homeless, all the way up to the top, right? You have access to education. So I think we're doing great by following all that. I think it's important that we start working with our community partners and creating new ways to break that cycle, right? Most people, believe it or not, are on paycheck from homelessness. And that's something that I think every household, there's a lot of households in this community that feel that, really, especially right now, right? There are tons of community programs that we could possibly implement, which are Bridges Out of Poverty, Pathway of Hope. Life skills are so important. As a social worker, how many times I'm like, they just don't have that social, that life skill? The life skill of budgeting, just tons of things that could possibly be going on. I would like to also see a safe way for staff and teachers to identify needs, such as, it'd be nice to clean your clothes if you need to clean your clothes, because mom and dad haven't done that. I, real quick, I hope I have enough time. I have a good friend that told me that when he was little, he would, because he was in poverty, he would bring an extra pair of underwear with him and wash them. And that's how he washed his clothes. To me, that's just heartbreaking. Sorry. Homelessness is really close to my heart, because that's what I do every day. And I will break those barriers and help all of our students to what they can do to be, who they can be, because that's where it begins, is education. So they can be a better person when they go to high school and go further. And it's gonna take that one person or that school to go where they need to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Statham?
As a student in 205, when, back in the seventies, I was one of those students who received free lunch. And when the district was voting to participate, whether or not to participate in the Free Lunch for All program, I talked to the board the night they were voting, and talked about how the, the stigma from being one of those students who had to give the cafeteria lady my name every single day, because I got free lunch. And so the thought of Free Lunch for All was, I was just ecstatic, and, and it's continued now. I can't remember how many years that we've had that, but I think that goes a long ways to, as others have said, to breaking down those barriers for students who have those issues that caused them to maybe not want to come to school, for whatever reason. Sometimes it is out of embarrassment. A lot of people don't know that in the area of special ed, it's one of the, I think, the only area where districts are required to spend at least as much or more than they did the year before. So I think the district does a good job of continually looking at programs that, and initiatives that they can be a part of, to, to help the students with special needs. And also the initiatives with the, as other people said, the ELL students, that's, that population of students has just exploded. And I think we need more resources in that area, besides the one person that was mentioned, who's kind of in charge of all it, hiring more people to make that population feel welcome, and feel like they are a part of our community as well.
Thank you. Ms. Bestab?
This is such a loaded question, because we could really have a long conversation on almost all of these statistics that we're talking about. We are a Title I funded school. We do have free meals. We do have Keisha Cares, which gives free hygiene products out, and many other things. McKinney-Vento, so we do have that funding, so this helps with our homeless population. I think what we really need to understand is that our homeless population that we're facing in the city is a direct effect on our school district. And we will need to figure out a good partnership between these two, so that we can increase more people in homes, if that is their desire. We do also have Huddle, which is mental health, and we've paid for free sessions, which can help with some of these individuals who are facing these socioeconomic issues. Mobility. Mobility is going to happen. We're not going to be able to stop people from moving across town and going to another school. It will happen. Now, can we get to the bottom of if there is mobility outside the district, and why? Those are questions we need to start asking families. Again, earlier, I, I let you know that I'm part of that 14.3% of families who have children who are part of the special education program. You know, a long history is that we broke off from Knox-Warren, and I think it's appropriate from the board level that we do look at assessing this program, and how well it is running, and what we can do better for those children, so that we can close that academic achievement gap.
Thank you. Mr. Yetson?
Thank you. So ultimately, we're looking at how well do we think that the district is doing in providing resources and programs to address the challenges that were all listed? And whether or not there's special initiatives that I'd recommend to address those. So the first thing I would like to look at, and, and I know it's probably a boring part of, of looking into items for the school district, but that would be the budget items. Whenever I look in there, I wonder sometimes whether or not we're, we're utilizing all the grant opportunities that are available to help us resolve some of these issues. An additional thing that I, I've seen is whether or not we need to expand the dual-credit programs. I know I've, I've heard talk of a lot of different dual-credit opportunities, but I know that several members of my family that, that attend schools just over the border in Wisconsin, and I've heard of a, a similar school down east of St. Louis that has dual-credit programs that'll allow the person, the student, when they graduate, to almost be at an associate's degree. I wonder if there's some opportunities that we can work with Sandberg, Black Hawk East, Western Illinois University. I don't think that this is a short-term fix. So the state of Illinois requires a, a path to graduation to be created for each student. Is there a path for those that are going to college? Is there a path that are also for kids that are not going to college? Can, can we expand on something for the vocational students? We have a, a really strong GAVC program within the district. Is there a way that we can expand on that, and have a student-work program that, that works in tandem with the GAVC? So they're not only learning the courses within GAVC, but they have an opportunity for a career as soon as they leave, and be able to work and become part of our, the community, just straight out of school. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six, and our last question. And a short one. Throughout the country, and here in the district, teachers and administrators have reported increasing levels of student misbehavior, classroom disruption, and violence in schools. As a school board member, how would you address this issue? We will begin with Ms. Statham.
As the director of special ed, one of my goals each year was to have more teachers, staff members- As the Director of Special Ed, one of my goals each year was to have more teachers, staff members, basically everyone who worked in the district, more and more get certified in the crisis prevention training. And eventually, I would love it if every person who works for the district could be trained in in those methods. It is a huge issue, continues to be an issue nationwide, as is said. It's not just our district, but also just continuing to reach out for community resources, parent education. I know there's a workshop coming up that the district is offering. I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but I know there is a parent workshop coming up for parents to learn some of the de-escalation techniques and how they can help in making sure that their students are not a classroom disruption. And obviously, when you lower the number of disruptions, more learning takes place. So just looking for those opportunities to educate more people about those methods and to increase student learning.
Thank you, Ms. Bestab.
So when it comes to how, when it comes to how we address this concern at the board level, we have to remember that our job is to look at policy and making sure that policy aligns with state guidelines and that is effective in our district. With that being said, as things change at the state level, things have to change within our district. So some of the things that we have done to assist and help is that we do, in the seven to twelve building, we do have a resource officer. We do also have security at that level. We have also introduced the Huddle, which I talked about, which is the virtual for mental health, to assist with children who might be facing some issues. I do think that it is important that when we talk about misbehavior in particular, that we understand that while, yes, there are some children who may misbehave, misbehavior is also a form of communication. So understanding what that looks like for each individual child is super important. The duty of the district is to make sure that we are doing child find and making sure that we are assessing children appropriately for services. And that would be part of this and bringing some accountability from the board level, making sure that these things are happening.
Excuse me. Thank you. Mr. Sherpy?
Okay, that's kind of a two-part question, student behavior and student safety. I I believe that, you know, it wouldn't be right for me to tell teachers, you know, how they should be handling student behavior. It is, as a board member, that's something that we have addressed. Couple of years ago, we had a district survey to create our strategic plan. And we listened to the community with that and created a plan. And part of the strategic aims of the plan, it's not just academic, but behavior is one of the components of the strategic plan. So each of the building principals with their staff, they look at those issues, you know, every every month and address ways to improve student behavior. Anecdotally, I've heard some crazy things that have happened in classrooms, you know, students throwing chairs and other stuff. And I believe that, you know, all students and staff should be safe in their classrooms. So whatever is that the teachers relate to the administrators that they need to provide that safety and security, I'm all for. As far as the security part, my background in law enforcement, I I certainly understand, you know, building security and when we rebuilt the buildings, that was an aspect. We rebuilt the buildings knowing that security was an aspect of that. We hired a director of security to ensure that the district has, you know, safe and secure buildings. We have a Galesburg police officer working at the high school. We've increased the number of security officers working in the district. I believe we could probably even increase that another position or two more to ensure the safety. But bottom line, you know, everybody working in our school district, whether it's students or being there or the staff, they should all feel safe and secure, you know, being there. That, the schools need to be a safe place.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Esters.
Ditto. No, I'm joking. That was really good. I would echo that as well. What I would add is like, this is, you know, violence and, you know, outbursts and what have you happen in all levels, right? It's not just high school, it's not just junior high, it happens in grade school too. I think it's important to really focus on the younger level because I feel like that's when labels begin. When you're labeled to be a bad person, you kind of start wearing that bad person label. And I think the way that we could combat that is to teach empathy. So my son, who was in second grade last year, he didn't have a good time. He would always tell me about these particular two students and how terrible it was and he was very upset going. This year, he goes, yeah, well, so-and-so's not too bad. I I've decided to let him be my friend. And I think that's so important to like, I don't feel like adults do that in in workforce, right? We're like, no, they're dead to me, you know? Like, I just feel like we need to teach those emotions that we are, we expect people to learn when they're, it's almost too late, right? I think, like I said, we need to start more at the bottom level and work up that way. Maybe it's more of our motto about empathy and what does that look like? Let's see, I think that's all. Also, community center, I'm going to say it all day, every day. If you have a community center, it takes one person to believe in a person, to uplift them and empower them. And maybe having a community center and, you know, you know, you could be there and teach a really valued skill or, you know, believe in somebody and that's going to be enough. I think we all could point out a few people in our lives that really touched us and made us believe in ourselves, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon.
Yes. None of us want misbehavior, none of us want disruption, none of us want violence. But as a board, I've isolated three roles we have relative to those. The first is, the board is involved in development of the Code of Conduct, which is shared with students and parents. And the board approves that and then is sent out. The board sets policies on how the code is implemented in all of our school. And the third thing is the board supervises the superintendent, who in fact supervises the staff to make sure these behavioral expectations are being enforced in the schools. I'll give the example here, we had a problem with cell phones in schools. It's not uncommon thing in the workplace as well. We had made the schools less safe in many ways because students were videotaping violence against students and then sharing it. We started this past year a self-free cellphone free policy. I think it could be tighter. And then once again, it has to be enforced. Is it being enforced is a question that comes to mind and I'm not so sure. But it needs to be, because any policy that we have relative to the behavior of our students needs to be enforced and universally. It's not just the teachers, it's the paraprofessionals, it's the lunchroom workers, it's our custodians. We need all get on board to enforce the policies so students know the expectations because they can't meet them unless they know they're there and that we remind them and they're held accountable for them. So we can do better and give us a chance to keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Betcher?
So as Member Bestab alluded to, the state and federal guidance comes down and they dictate what we can do and then as a board, we have to establish policies. So the new things, I shouldn't say the new thing, but they're, they want less suspensions. And I know that's very frustrating to our staff in the school district, I hear it all the time. Because I think that they feel the board doesn't want punishment or change of behavior. And that's not what it is. It's what, it's trying to avoid going straight to suspension, especially for those children of color who tend to have more suspensions than their white counterparts. So we established in the, so I was on the Code of Conduct Committee since I've been on the board and we established the guidelines, we we put it in our Code of Conduct. And restorative chats and restorative measures are a big part of that. And I know, again, from staff, that they don't like to hear that either. And I think where the breakdown is, is that maybe we're spending too much time on restorative measures and we're not moving along. Like, if that's not working, we need to move along. Or, you know, we're doing restorative chats and restorative chats and restorative chats and we're not moving along. And I think that might be the breakdown. I think maybe we need to have a little bit more education on how, and and maybe just vocalize how how we want to see behavior and discipline run in our district and get more teacher input on that. They're the ones managing the classrooms, they're the ones running the classrooms. I want to hear from them on how we can do that more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yetson.
Thank you. So how do we deal with the increasing levels of student misbehavior, classroom disruption, and violence in schools? Whenever I was in high school, my parents owned a donut shop and there was lots of different people from lots of different walks of life that would come in there. And I remember one gentleman that would would come in and tell me, "Oh, back in my day, you you wouldn't have been able to survive." This is, this is crazy, you've got things so easy. I I'd be honest to say, in looking back over the last ten to twenty years, I think our students have the hardest lives to live right now. I mean, we've lived in a lifestyle or our, our, our areas have gotten used to school shootings that happened over the last ten to twenty years. You see it in the news all the time. Then they were thrown into COVID and they were pulled apart from all of their friends. Our kids were apart from one another for almost a year to two years, if I remember correctly. And I don't know if they realize that this is, what they're doing in the schools is wrong. I mean, I would like to assume that they know what right and wrong is. But in in order to to try to bring us back to what we used to know as a norm, maybe we need to push, you know, don't believe everything that you see on social media. Because there's, there's different instances where I seen videos that that say that they applaud kids doing things wrong, like damaging personal property or hurting people. Those aren't the types of conduct that we want. So how would we combat this as a school board member? I think that maybe we need to go back and look at the Code of Conduct and again, reach out to other districts that have successfully began to turn this trend around. I I know that as we sit in this, it's it's easier, easy for us to think that it's it's just getting worse and worse and worse.
Mr. Yetson, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You will now have one minute each for a closing statement. I'm going to ask each candidate to stand as they did for their opening statement. And I'm going to ask, I will call on you again for each of these or try to give you a heads up when you need to grab your microphone. So we will begin with Ms. Betcher, Tara Betcher.
I'd better hurry, that's only a minute, stop distracting me. All right, I just want to point out that experience is really important in being a board member. Our friends, our family members, our community depend on a strong cohesive board to make relevant and appropriate decisions for our school district. I am both experienced and knowledgeable with school services, social work, board policy and procedures. Beyond the board is a privilege and we have to choose our candidates wisely. I know, I remember before I ran for election, I have thirty seconds left. I am just going to stop right there because it's a very long story and just tell you that I appreciate the four years I've had. It's an honor, it's a privilege. I would love to have four more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon?
Yeah, I've spoken a lot already and it's always a common problem of mine. I've spoken about my experience over the last forty years, but I'm going to finish differently. Few names here I want to share. Morris Fusano, nineteen oh six. Bess Vasubanikoff, nineteen oh six. David Lechak-Lyon, nineteen eleven. Anna Rosenberg, nineteen twelve. Those are my grandparents of blessed memory and the year they arrived in the United States from various parts of the Tsarist Russian Empire. Among the things they came to America for was the ability to vote. And they did it once they became citizens. And I hope our community will use that valuable right on April first.
Thank you, Ms. Bestab.
I have enough time to finish my opening. So what I was getting at is that, that is equity work. Children getting access to educational services that are needed to be academically successful. As a school board member and social worker, my job is to move with integrity in all that I do for everyone who needs help. I do this by following all federal and state legal guidelines. There are no easy solutions when dealing with policy. Four years ago, I was elected and trusted by the people of this community unanimously to be their school board member. I was elected to do the work of the people. The work I have been doing is evidenced by attaining an established school board member designation in three and a half years while in this position. I asked for your vote today to continue the work of empowerment, equity, and policy work needed to keep Galesburg District two oh five, one of the best rural school districts, around. I am our direct connection to effective change as I currently sit on the executive board of the Western Division. If reelected, I would pursue a different position on that executive board to make more impactful change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherpy.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. As you could tell, everybody here is here because they care about students. And if if any of them are elected, they'll do the right thing. What differentiates, differentiates us is little things. For myself, I have proven leaderships. I've been on the school board for eight years. I've worked hard doing contract negotiations and insurance committees. I've dedicated myself to this position. I've come to meetings prepared and during this entire time, some of my goals have been maintaining fiscal responsibility. During the past eight years, we have not raised property tax rates. I'm committed to supporting our educators and staff. If if they want to talk to me, I will listen. If not, I still go to the classrooms and watch and observe what they're doing. I'm open for transparency and community engagement. Community engagement is what makes a school district work. Bottom line, I'm focused on student success, students first, while being fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith Esters.
Thank you. I would like to say that I have been doing service since I was seventeen years old when I joined the Illinois National Guard and I haven't stopped and nor will I. I wanted to say what Mr. Sherpy said about how we all do want to, will work hard. Just so you know what kind of, what I plan on bringing to the school board would be that I plan on working with our city. I think that's been lacking for a while. Again, because schools are the backbones of our community, right? I will work hard, I will be visible in the schools, find more resources. I'm not afraid to ask or find more money because I know how the state works and I know where the state has their money. So I'm willing to go in there and get it for us. I bring the expertise of a governor, governance. I know where our financials come from and, like I said, I'm going to find innovative ways to bring more in. And I just got to stop, am I getting my stop sign? But anyway, see you at the polls, they're, you know, April first and remember, early voting is open. So thank you so much for all that came out in this cold, dreweed night.
Thank you, Ms. Statham.
I think I'm in a unique position, having been a student in two oh five, a parent in two oh five, a teacher in two oh five, a counselor, an administrator. I've bargained contracts on both sides of the table, which I don't think very many people can say. I think I'm a very approachable person and a good listener. Fostering a spirit of collaboration is very important to me. It takes everyone to, working together to make an organization run well. I believe I have the skills to bring people together to foster a culture of openness, collaboration, mutual respect and transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Yetson.
Hello. First of all, I'd like to applaud all the persons that came out tonight, both the candidates and all those that are there. It's not easy to come before everyone and It's not easy to come before everyone and give a 60-second to two-minute insight into how each one of us thinks. I myself will continue to knock on the doors and find out what you as a voter think our problems are. I, I want your vote, so tell me about the problems I can help solve. I want our children to continue to succeed. In, in my 26 years of being in the military, I can bring Air Force values of service before self, integrity first, and excellence in everything that I do. Finally, please go out and vote on April 1st. Pass that along. Pass along that we can all help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you to all the candidates for coming this evening to this forum and to the NAACP for hosting and the library for providing us this beautiful space in which to host this forum. I would remind everyone that you will be able to hear the audio on WGIL's website and on their app after this. If you have friends and family you think need to hear it, you'll also be able to watch the video on TSPR, Tri-State Public Radio YouTube channel and on our website. So if, you know, feel free to pass those things around to people you think are interested and get them to go out and vote on April 1st. I invite all the candidates to remain and speak to the individuals here. And thank you again for coming on this dreary, hopefully, spring night.